We call the order for this study session before we can talk about water issues in the city. And I ask everybody, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call.
Certainly. Councilpersons, Baer?
Here.
Dupre?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salcedo?
Here.
Zohar?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Higgins?
Here. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, let her tell everybody what we're doing here, and then we'll probably bring up John.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we are going to talk about the city's meters throughout the city, and what the problems that we're having, and what we need to do to address that. We do have John Kazoo, our DPS director, Justin Gonzalez, our DPS foreman, Steve, I won't butcher your last name again, from Hennessy, and Lisa Jones from Finance. So we've all been involved in discussions, many of us involved for many years, on the issues we've been having. So I am going to do a short presentation tonight, and I'm going to talk about the problems that we've been having for several years now. And then I will turn it over to Steve and John, and we'll talk about what we need to do to address these issues, and what our options are. So Lincoln Park did do a mass meter changeout back in 2010 into 2011. We replaced approximately 15,000 meters throughout the city. Those do include residents' homes, as well as businesses. We were having some issues right from the start, so we did install additional boosters for many of the homes, so some of the homes we could not read from the basement. So one of the recommendations from the contractor at the time was to put boosters in. So those boosters went on the outside of the home, and gave us a better signal to pick up reads. The life expectancy for meters is generally 15 to 20 years, and we are getting near that point now. Battery lives on the meters is expected to be about 10 years, which we are now past, and we are experiencing, as we have been for quite a while now, battery issues on a regular basis throughout the community. Replacement batteries, as well, are no longer available for our meters that we have, so that's caused many issues as well. We are currently estimating about 11% of our customers throughout the city. I'm sure many of you have seen complaints throughout time of customers who we do estimates for. It's been an ongoing issue, and it's just continually got worse throughout the years. So with 11%, that just causes us many customer service issues, repeated phone calls from customers. Some of those customers are receiving repeated estimates. And once we go out to the home, we're finding error codes, different issues with the meters. We cannot accurately determine with those meters what the read is on many of them, so we'll pull the meter, we'll get error codes, and we have to estimate based on what their history of usage is when we had actual reads. So that causes many, many issues as well. We don't know if we're overestimating them, or if we're underestimating them.
Lisa, can we stop right there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Because when you say that, you're going to look at the history. If it's, let's say it's a rental property, you know, and the renters could vary, right, from, say, a family of five going down to a family, the new renters are a family of two or three.
Right.
You know, so...
And we do run into those issues. We try to address them if they come up. It's hard sometimes, though, because the only data we really have to go on is what the actual usage is. We do have some data out there that we've collected over time on what an average family of four uses. But again, that varies, because some people don't wash clothes as much, or, you know, maybe they have four people in the house, but, you know, we don't know if somebody's been living out of the home, staying with a friend for a while. There's just so many variables that come into it. So we do the best we can, and build off the data that we have.
So let me ask you this: When you take the meters out, can any of, you know, being that there are different codes that come on, any of them return back to service?
Very, very rarely. Maybe early on, there was some that would come back. Even when we send them out to be checked, usually there's data extraction that can be done, and that we're finding difficult to get that data back. There have been times, early on, where we would send it out to the meter company, and they could pull, extract the data, even though we couldn't. But it's few and far between.
So it's not like, turn it off and back on?
Right, right. Another issue that we found is when we purchased the system many years ago, there were many things that we were sold on with the product. We'd never been able to fully realize those promises. As, I'll get, I'm going to get into a little bit more, but just many aspects. So even the boosters, when we talk about the boosters that were installed, we were sold a product that we didn't know there would be issues reading in the basements. They knew the homes of Lincoln Park, you know, the majority of them had basements, so we needed a system that could read from the basement. We found we couldn't do that, so we had to install boosters. That was an additional cost to the city. So we weren't, they were not upfront with that, and honest about that, until several years into the project. We had so many meetings, so many meetings with them, and it finally came out that, well, these meters that we sold you, by this point, I believe they might have already transferred to the other company, were not designed to go into basements. So that's a huge issue. We do get a lot of the reads, but there's always some obstacle that we've ran into with it. Another issue is that the technology of our meters, of course, you're 15 years out, nearly, the technology has changed, it's old and not as accurate as today's standards would be. We also have a large infrastructure for the system, so we have 13 collectors throughout the community, new metering systems, one or two towers is all that's required. So we have, we have them on the different schools throughout the city, we have one on the senior tower, there's one here at City Hall. But for every one that you add, that's just more cost. So as, you know, things fall, we fail, we've had lightning strike them, we've had just power issues with them, we've switched them to solar to try and make it better, we've gone through various issues with them. That's all a cost. And just more of the monitor, overall. Again, the meters are failing constantly, causing many estimated reads. We have a list right now of over 100 meters that we're trying to get replaced, so these are ones that we know we can't extract the data from, so they had the error codes. As we get meters in, we generally get, what, maybe 20?
I think the last shipment was 50.
Okay, so 50, but we still have a list of over 100. So we have people waiting many, many months to have their meters replaced. In the meantime, they're getting more estimates, and we don't know how accurate, again, those billings are that we're sending them. Staff has spent many hours, for years, working on meter issues. These involve meetings with the contractors. I can't tell you how many meetings I've sat in with, back originally Michigan Meter, and then Ferguson, trying to address all of these issues, and get it hammered out, and we've just never fully gotten the system that we purchased. We're scheduling repairs constantly to the collectors, talking to residents regarding meter issues, sending our serviceman out to the homes, and not having the full ability to track leaks, and/or load no usage to the homes, because those meters that we're not getting good data off of, we can't obviously tell if there's a leak. Another issue, which I don't have in here, is that there's so many of them that we can't pick up, you know, in theory, we should be able to pull up the reads for all homes in the city right now, right here. We can't do that, so we have to send our serviceman out with a laptop, and he drives throughout the different areas to pick up reads, as many as he can. And those that he still can't get, we have to estimate those. This was pretty staggering when we looked at the history over, so we went back, looked back to when it kind of cut off from putting the original infrastructure in, because that project did go on for a little bit, but we've spent over $400,000 in the last nine years. So that includes items like replacing the towers, or making repairs to them, switching to solar, all of the meters that we've had to replace throughout time. So the city cannot continue to pour money into this aging system, just to keep it limping along. The Water Office, again, receives numerous complaints, weekly, error codes, estimated bills, failing batteries and meters, and the inability to notify residents of leaks. I already mentioned our DPS serviceman, how much time he spends on the issues, and if a dollar amount could be placed on these items, it would be staggering. The city has begun a multi-faceted process to address the infrastructure needs of the city. These projects include replacing water mains throughout the city over the last year and a half. The council also authorized another water main project tonight at this meeting. The city has started a lead service replacement program. We're asking for authorization for pressure reduction valves, and council has given authorization to begin the water leak detection program, and employees are currently in the process of being hired for that program. All of these items are important infrastructure needs of the city. They all cost a lot of money, as we all know, and meters are part of the overall infrastructure of the city. And one thing to keep in mind is, we know our infrastructure has suffered throughout time, because we didn't address needs upfront. We kind of, you know, took the look-back approach, as things started to break, then we addressed them. This is one of the things we know is breaking, we know we have limited time left with it, so we want to address it now. So we do need to begin the process of purchasing new meters citywide for the city, or the problems will just continue to grow and compound. There is still debt on the old system, unfortunately. We are exploring options for that, as well as grant funding, financing options for a new system, and whether we roll out the meters all at once, or if we do it staggered over time. So those are the...
Lisa?
Yeah?
How much debt are we looking at on the old system still?
We have just over $100,000 left.
And as we take these old meters out, what are we going to do with them?
So there is some potential to scrap some of them, and get money back for them. It's not going to be anything substantial, so that's why we are considering maybe, you know, rowing the process of the project out, some of the financing options that we have with a new company, as they will allow us to not have a payment for the first year, if we can get some grant funding to help.
How many years is a payment, I mean, if we weren't going to do this, if the meters were all working, how many years would it have taken to pay off this current meter situation?
About four years.
Four more years.
Mm-hmm. So our thoughts are, once we get authorization to go out for the program, we get everything lined up, by the time the project actually kicks off and gets in place, if we can finance it where we don't have to pay that first year, we'll be about two years left on the current debt. But do keep in mind, there were other items included in that original debt, other than just water meters. So, you know, there was entire software package for the city, and a few other things. So it wasn't just water meters, but it's still substantial, and that's one of the reasons why we've kind of been kicking the can down the road, because the decision at the time was to do a 20-year bond. That probably wasn't the best decision, knowing the lifespan of meters, and unfortunately, we've had nothing but problems with the entire system, from meters to the collectors that bring in the data.
Is there any incentives, or any options through the state, for funding, or grants, or anything that there are?
Well, that's what we're looking at. We don't want to, you know, spend too much time digging into it unless we know council is on board with us going forward. We know internally that even if council was to put the nicks on this, that we still have to look at it in the next year or two, so we are exploring all options. And Steve from Hennessy has done a lot of work with other communities, from researching the different meter companies, to working with, you know, the different cities on implementing the new meters, and he's going to talk some about that, and how that works, and what his experience has been, and what we can look. We also know that there's going to be a return on investment, so we want to start hammering out those numbers, and what that would look like, because we are going to see, and keep in mind, I know there's been a lot of discussion about water loss over time, that the meters were promised to cure the water loss. That was, that was never my understanding of it. It's, you know, it's a piece of the puzzle, but there's so many variables from the water mains, and all of the different areas throughout the city. We have quite a large infrastructure, so this is just one piece of it. But I know personally, my staff in Finance spends way too much time dealing with these issues constantly.
Is there any updates on finding anyone to work on the water loss? Any hiring employees?
For the leak detection, yeah. We have, we have employees in the process right now. Interviews were done, and they're going through the process.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Lisa, I have a question.
I have a question for Sarah, that's okay.
Sure.
And I remind everybody, you were supposed to go through the chair, just so everybody. You mentioned that part of $1 million was because of, we had to buy a tech package?
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to have to go through a whole new tech package, or?
No, so that included all of our financial software for the city as well, so no. There is, like, our current metering system, and this is one of the things we have to take into consideration when we bid out the project, is we're currently paying like a $30,000 annual fee for the Neptune system, just to be able to look at data that we can't always see, so that'll be, you know, it sounds like a lot of the new companies have a lot more, and I'll let Steve talk on this, but they have the apps for the residents to use where they can monitor their usage. Correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but...
Yes, please use the microphone, so the people at home hear what's going on.
That's a great idea.
Yes, a lot of the systems now come with customer portals, that they can get on apps on their phone, or through computers, and look up their usage, all kinds of different, you know, things that they can do with that.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So Steve, if you were having a leak that you were not aware of, if you could turn to that app, would it red-flag you?
Yes.
Very nice.
Yes, and also the staff would get alerted, and they could alert the resident of such a thing. And a lot of them, they go on vacation, they can set alarms, if there's any water use, whether they're gone, it alerts them, you know, lots of different things like that.
That's nice.
Yeah, and there was, with the current system that we have, there was, there is some capability internally, but it's a lot of data pulling, and again, when we have numerous meters, we're not able, you know, and even if, even if there are meters that we can get a read off of, and you're not being estimated, that doesn't mean we're pulling the data in off the collectors on the 15-minute basis, like we're supposed to be. Some we do, some we don't. So we can't necessarily mid-cycle go through and see that, you know, Maureen has a leak, or Joe Smith has a leak, because we're having our serviceman go out quarterly to pull the read. All he's getting is the read, he's not getting all of that daily data that we should be getting.
So through the chair?
Yes.
So the question that I had was, all those years ago, when the system was purchased, and we started finding out that we didn't get what we paid for, and that we were misled, did the city take any recourse?
We've had, throughout the different administrations, I mean, just so many meetings with them, and that was probably six or seven years into the project.
So it's not like they were under warranty, or?
Right, right.
And we were locked into a contract, I guess, for so many years?
Well, at that point, we already had the whole system in place.
Okay.
So this was after the meters were, and we were seeing these issues, and we couldn't get them resolved, and meeting with the various, we met with the contractors that installed the collectors, to see if those were issues. I mean, it's just been numerous issues throughout time.
So I think, I guess the point is, is that as we move forward, and we look for a new vendor, that we consider those things, and actually put those in the contract.
Right, and that's where Steve has done a lot of research for other communities, and he's vetted a lot of companies, so he knows, and he's implemented them for communities, so he knows what their percentage of reads are, and they're getting, what, 98, 99% reads?
Yeah, you should get like 98.5, should be low side. And I don't, I don't think your system is even close to that.
No.
Anybody have any other questions for Lisa, or Steve? Okay.
Steve, is there anything else that we want to talk about with a new meter system?
Well, yeah. A new system gives you a lot of capabilities of, you know, like, if somebody tampers with the meter, pulls it, reverses it, it'll alert you, alarm you, that. And their, the meters now are ultrasonic, they're ultra-magnetic, and their read capabilities are like down to a tenth of a gallon. So you pick up, you're going to pick up a lot of water that's being missed right now, right off the bat, because the read, the capabilities of the meters to read low volumes of water are far greater than they were, you know, 10, 15 years ago. So, you know, with the technology and the system that you have now, it doesn't give you any of that. And you're at a point that you could wait a little while, but getting ahead of it, it's going to take you a little while to implement, you know, it's going to take you two years to implement it, so by the time you get to the implementation stage, you're going to be, your meters are going to be, you know, pushing 18, 20 years old. So I think it's, you know, it's a perfect opportunity to put a new system in place, one for the future.
How long do the new systems last?
They're, the meters themselves, accuracy, accuracy isn't like indefinite. I mean, they're all digital, no moving parts, it's all solid-state stuff. So the accuracy maintains, the warranties are 20, 25 years on them, the battery lives are, I think, 10 to 15, and they get prorated after that, so they have increased a lot of the warranty levels on them, and they last a lot longer. And they, you know, the cloud-based systems now record a lot of data, and they store it for you, so you can go back and have accurate data. I mean, they store them daily, they send them to a collector. And the new systems have the capabilities, like right now, you have like 13 booster stations in place, the new systems would probably do it with two. And, you know, you can on-demand read your final, you can read a final bill to a customer right from the computer screen at your office. So they're just far more technically advanced now.
To the chair? Yes. Can you turn those meters off and on?
No.
No?
No, you can, they can update them, like, you know, it can do a cellphone, you know, they can update the software systems, but you can't, you can't turn them off, no.
What kind of money are we looking at per meter?
Well, probably, if you go with like a, you know, probably $150, $175 a meter, probably for a new meter.
And there is the infrastructure cost, too, the collectors that he's talking about, the installation as well. We know it's going to be very, very costly. That's, you know, probably the biggest obstacle in this whole project is the cost.
Yeah, and you can implement it in stages, too. I've been, I did one in Taylor, and it took us probably two and a half, two and a half years to get the whole thing. That was 22,000 accounts, but it kind of was a two-tier, two-year system. We did commercial, got that out of the way, then went and implemented residential, which I would recommend that, you know, if you decided to do like a two-phase system, get your commercials on first, because that's usually your highest consumption users, and then move into residential.
To the chair?
Yes.
This question isn't necessarily about the water meters, but you said this is just one part of how we're addressing the water issues, and can, are we, can you give any kind of an update where we're like, where we're, or John, like, where we're at in things like the water main replacement? I know we have pressure relief valves on the agenda, but I'm guessing that the average resident can read pressure relief valve, and not really know what, you know, what that means, just to kind of give us a status report for, you know, you know, we've been working on the water main project for a couple of years now, and, you know, where are things headed? Have we gotten any, you know, data back from that sort of thing?
Mayor and Council, John Kazoo, if I could answer that, and a couple of other questions. If you recall, we've been doing water main replacements, and lead service replacements, with some of our total removal and replacement concrete roadwork. We've been doing that a couple of years now. Last year, in the, let's say, springtime, we've implemented a first contract of just a total water main and lead service replacement. That went so well, we then went into the second year last year. Now this spring, we started the third year. And shortly this afternoon, or I should say, in the next meeting, we're going to ask your concurrence to go out for the fourth year. And we've also got a fifth year that's not yet arrived for that work, and those also include lead replacements. So you're on board right now with the water replacement, because that's also a big problem in this community. Not only is it the leakage, but it's the breakage, and the time cost to repair the brakes with a simple stainless steel saddle, plus now the concrete repair. So the water, you've put your best foot forward, and you're moving, and that should continue for probably about the next 25 years. The second part to that is simultaneously, along with the water main work, you've been replacing lead services, and you're mandated by the state to do that. But there is also, again, this after, or this evening, another request to put lead service replacement out to bid, and there's $5 million there. That, again, has to be done until all of the lead services have been replaced throughout the city. And it was, Eagle said that was mandated at a 20-year process. EPA is in process of changing that 20 years down to 10 years, which means they're condensing it, and it has to be done faster. But we've started that second part of the journey. Then the third part of the journey is putting in these pressure reduction valves, and what that is, and you've heard me come up here and talk about those numerous times. When Great Lakes Water Authority bumps up the pressure to all of the users, when it comes to Allen Park, excuse me, Lincoln Park, when we get up to probably around 68, 70 PSI or greater, then it creates problems. And it might be just one simple water main break throughout the, over 200 linear feet, or 17,000 linear feet of water pressure, or water mains that we have. So you're making a good step forward there. Then the last one, and this was probably, we started this probably a year and a half ago, is get some people on board to start looking for these leakers. There's a lot of leakers that are going to your sanitary piping, that you don't know about, same thing with the storm, or it even gets dispersed underneath some of the creeks, because we have, and I don't remember exactly, but I think we've got 17 water mains going underneath the creeks. And if you have a main break underneath the creek, you may never know it. It may leak for quite some time, so we're trying to replace that, too.
And the only way we can really put it down into the water losses, or address all of these different parts of it at the same time?
All of these components have to be part of the whole. Now, the unfortunate part is, and I've told this group numerous times, too, the unfortunate part, and God, I hope, God doesn't strike me down for saying this, but all of you, in my opinion, are not at fault for this. Also, this should have started 30 years ago, but back then, and it's still the same way today, I'm going to say this quietly, but politicians don't like to go after additional money to replace infrastructure. But this group has been put in that position where you have to. You've got to do something, because the breaks, the water loss, and the components of this ginormous system have to be changed out. And I'm sorry to put it that way, but you're in the driver's seat there.
Trying to end on a little bit of a positive note, but I know every time you give a report, you have how many water main breaks that we've had per quarter, and has there been continued decrease in water main breaks, in your opinion?
A little bit, not a whole lot of it. And the reason for that is, as they're being replaced, they're being fixed.
New.
You guys, with new, you have to remember...
Spot break.
Yep. Additional spot break, but what I was going with it is, as you replace the new system, and you replace the breaks that we're having, rest of the system is failing around us. There's nothing for us to go out and fix us, there's nothing for us to go out and fix a water main break in front of this particular address, and when you re-energize it to put it back into service, it breaks six feet away, and that's because of the age, age and water pressure, but with these new pressure reduction valves, what we would like to do is get those in place, and set it at maybe 65 PSI, so that when we get the spikes of 70, 80, maybe even the low 90 PSI's, it doesn't create one, two, three, or four water main breaks in one singular day.
Through the chair.
Is there a difference between a pressure reduction valve and a pressure reduction vault?
No, to me, it's synonymous, one is the other, I have a tendency, a lot of times, to call it a pressure reduction vault, but on the inside of that is a pressure reduction valve, sometimes, but not this time, if Great Lakes Water Authority's meter valves, AKA vaults, if there's enough room, and you, Sweet Top, Great Lakes Water Authority, and there's enough room in there, they may allow you to put your valve on the inside of their meter, which will save you money, unfortunately, we thought, through Steve, that they were going to allow us to put a singular valve into their existing vault, and they said, yes, 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 and then it came back, said, sorry, we don't have enough room, so we'll have to put in two separate vaults to house the meters, and it's right adjacent to their, our meter with them.
Okay, so you're requesting, you're going out for bids for vaults tonight, not valves?
Both.
For both, okay.
But for the valves, we have to put it into a vault, and that'll be in the next meeting.
Okay, the valves will be in the next meeting, the vaults are tonight, okay.
Well, all of it is tonight, I think I've got about five things on the agenda.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that it was two separate things.
They're one and the same, because we have to put, we cannot just put a meter in the bare ground, if we cannot put it into a Great Lakes Water Authority vault, then we have to provide a vault to put our meter in, and in this case, we thought we had one and one, one where we would have to replace a vault plus a meter, but then Great Lakes Water Authority retracted and said, oh, by the way, we've now determined, we don't think we've got enough room for your one meter, so put it in a vault.
So I'm sorry, through the chair?
Yep, all right.
I was just going to say, you can't have one without the other.
I understand, and I just was confused, because he's calling one a vault and one a valve, and I'm.
And they are two different things.
Right, and what I'm looking at, it's, it's just, I just wanted clarification.
So through the chair?
Yes.
Question, John, if, if we're having water main breaks because of the pressure spikes, is Great Lakes Water Authority aware of our issue?
It's not only, they're not only aware of our issues, but probably another 50, 60 communities out there, because when we have a problem, I can make a call to Allen Park, South Gate, E Course, and they'll say, you know, the result of that pressure spike we had last night, we've got three main breaks, well, we've only got two, well, we've got three, well, we've got four.
So I guess my question is, if they are aware of that the pressure spikes caused this problem for the communities, why do they continue to do it?
It's not intentional, some of it is their equipment, because what you'll find, and can anybody picture what we call the Southwest Water Treatment Plant, it's the water production plant at approximately Goddard and I-75, you probably have seen it, may not have noticed what it is, that doesn't have, I want to say, the pumps with, what they call soft starts, because they don't, they haven't updated that equipment, but they're in that process, because they've got the same issues we've got, their system is old, if not older than ours, and they're doing it with money becoming available, and with this, when we don't have those soft starts, it'll zoom up that water pressure pretty quickly, which affects the Down River Communities, and we have, and I have, sent them emails, put in phone calls on some of the other communities.
Thank you, and if I could backtrack to Steve and the new water meters.
Okay.
Steve, I might have missed it if you said this, but I'm just curious, with the new, with the new meters out there, can the batteries in those be replaced, or?
No.
They can't either?
No, they're integral in the meter itself.
Okay.
So Steve, how is it handled then?
They change the whole assembly.
Change the whole assembly?
Yeah, they prorate it, the question about the PRV vaults, I think I can simplify, what they are is assemblies, so the vault and the PRV valve, it's an assembly, they come together, they're separate components, but they're sold as an assembly.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's one thing.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
To the chair, your honor, Steve, you may want to stay up there.
Oh.
Okay. I was in the desk a couple hours ago, so I may sound a little funny than normal, but you mentioned that you may want to do businesses first, I mean, I hope there was a strategic plan, I mean, I would attack car washes, restaurant chains that use water, but I wouldn't go to a realtor office or attorney's office and, you know, put that on the forefront, if we have over 100 meters on a waiting list for a residence.
Yeah.
If that makes any sense, I would target those 100 meters that are on the waiting list, residents may want to come first, so having said that, I want to spin off what Mr. Kazoo said, and this counsel here, this is a problem we're trying to fix, we had nothing to do with this meter issue, we're trying to fix it, right?
Right.
I just hope the residents ever understand that, we're trying to fix a problem, you know, that's all I have for you, is in regards to picking businesses first, I would target the residents that need them the most, and or car washes, and businesses that use more water, okay, that's all I wanted to spin on you, get creative in that aspect.
Okay.
And that's all I have, your honor, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for Steve? Okay, Mr. Kazoo, did you want to go over the, this, or do you want to?
I'm sorry, go over which, or what?
The information you gave us today.
I think Lisa's already gone through this.
Okay, all right, I want to make sure, you know, if there was anything you wanted to add, that's what I was.
I basically had, I basically had.
Microphone, please.
And Mr. Zora, put a pretty good spin on it, this isn't something that's been created by this body, this was created by mayors and councils 30 years ago, and so now you're having to pay, or, Mr. Salsedo, you tried to correct a problem that was created over numerous years, and this city is not any different than a lot of them out there, it's all over the nation, and it's roadways, it's bridges, it's all of that, and right now, and I've said this 100 times, the American Civil Engineering Society has graded America's infrastructure at a D minus, that's just how far the nation is behind.
And if I could, oh, go ahead.
One comment, is our situation as counsel, is these are things that are unseeable by the eye, you know, I mean, they see it backhoe, digging, they don't know why they're digging, so it's, you know, to our residents, they're not seeing what we're doing, you know, unless it's affecting their house right now, but everybody's paying for new things, and their things are failing.
Right.
You know, so it's all underground, it's hard to be a representative of the city when we have so much failing infrastructure.
And you know why, but everybody else doesn't know why.
Thank you, that's all I had.
If I could just say one more thing, Mayor?
Absolutely.
So I just, I do want to address that, and even going back to the meters, we know, we know what we haven't done, whether it was, you know, many, many generations, or many, many councils ago, we know the issues that we're facing now, and many communities who do handle their infrastructure needs on a more, pick the right word, scheduled, responsible basis, the water meters are one of the items that they do change out as they, as they age, so I just want to keep that in mind, we know our water main issues, all of our infrastructure issues, our roads, everything that needs to be addressed, if they would have been maintained, or, you know, even a simple mill and overlay throughout the years, many of the roads could have had longer longevity, but we are where we are, and now we have to unfortunately face the hard issues, and the hard, hard financial issues, and unfortunately, you're right, many taxpayers, you know, whether it's through the rates, or through their taxes, or paying for services, that they're not necessarily seeing, they may drive over a new road and not realize that they helped fund that, you know, because it didn't affect their road in front of their home, but these are all items that we need to continue to address, and the responsible thing is to continually upgrade our infrastructure needs throughout the city, whichever area it is.
It is much easier to kick the can down the road than to actually do something, and unfortunately, in the past, road, the can has been kicked down, and the can has busted now, so we must fix it, and that's just the way it is, so it's time for us to be responsible and stand up and do what needs to be done, does anybody else have any questions on this tonight? All right, then we will take a break to the regular.
To the chair, should you offer public comment?
Oh, yeah, does anybody in the public can't want to say anything? I knew we'd have one person, come on now.
Evening, Mayor, Councilman Richard Kudjik, I just sit here dumbfounded that we installed brand-new water meters, and whichever, whoever was on the committee did not know those meters are not supposed to go in a basement, are you kidding me? I just sit here and said, I'm a homeowner, that's one of the questions I ask when they're doing stuff in my house, you know, tell me all about it, tell me everything, what I like to do is say, give me all of the information that goes beyond the questions that I asked, you have lots of information, tell me everything, so then I sit there and I said, well, we're talking about, yes, when Mr. Duchesne was the city manager, we were talking about those new water meters, absolutely, there was two parts to this, it was going to improve billing, yes, the primary thing was, we were going to do electronic billing, and we were going to get rid of all the people who go door-to-door and read the meters, so we're going to save money, but oh my God, we were going to reduce 28% water loss, yes, that was said over, and over, and over again, I don't know who didn't understand that, because I certainly did, and that was a thing that when they finally, when they finally went to those meters, and they're checking the water bills, and find out who may be scamming on the water bill, seven people got fired, and they all worked for the DPS, and I said, this dumb question, what about their families, what about their relatives, what about their friends, do you really mean to tell me there's only been seven meters in the city that were messed over by a DPS employee, there's no reality to that statement, I just said, you can't tell me that they're the only ones, and that would be one of the questions I would ask with these new meters, can anybody in the DPS or somewhere else disable the meter, so it does not give an accurate reading, and I said, we talk about the pressure release valves, how many times you hear John Kazoo up here talking about water main breaks because of excessive pressure, except, I've been hearing that for years, I've been hearing stories about flooded basements for years, why didn't we do something about these years ago, if John Kazoo's been telling you for seven or eight years that excessive pressure is breaking our water, our water mains, why weren't those pressure release valves replaced years ago, or decades ago, as appropriate, so yes, you're dealing with the sins of previous administrations, but the residents, today's residents have to pay for it, and we don't like it, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience have anything to say? Okay, then we will adjourn on to 7 o'clock meeting.